Good evening. Welcome back to the Lompoc City Council meeting. And city attorney, you have a report on the action taken during closed session.
There was no reportable action taken.
And Bishop Miller will be doing our invocation wherever you are. You aren't. I have my book, "Life is Good." To turn on the microphone. First, let us take just a moment to remember the brave firefighters who gave their lives in Arizona with a moment of silence. Almighty God, we've come to you this evening asking your -- asking you for guidance and wisdom as to the concerns of our city. You've told us that if any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask of God, who gives to all generously and without reproach, and it will be given to him. This is our request for the meeting. Give us wisdom. Please guide us as we make decisions tonight about the things that must be accomplished immediately. Please give us wisdom to understand and see the future ramifications of those things that we will be -- that will be discussed during this meeting so that we will be able to make prudent decisions on those topics for the future. Almighty God, we ask you to remove the frustrations and stress of this day from each of us so that we may concentrate on the business at hand. We ask you to remove our tiredness and replace it with extra physical and mental stamina. Please bless us this evening. Thank you for hearing our prayer. Amen. And if you would join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. My thanks to the Air Force chaplain, who was nice enough to share this invocation with me for just such an occasion as this. And next, we will have a presentation -- have some presentations. And first, we will have Imre's. We'll present a donation to the city in support of the city's annual Fourth of July event. And we have Sarah Walton, and Mark Branson, and Jill Redding, and Janelle Garcia. Come on down. Helpers are good.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, audience at home and here in the council chambers. Tonight, Imre's is here to present the city of Lompoc with a generous donation for the Fourth of July Firework Show. We are so excited. Earlier this year, they presented a challenge to the community to open up their pockets and raise up to $10,000 or at least $10,000. And Imre's was able to generously match that money that was raised so that we could have a Fourth of July Firework Show this year, which will take place on this Thursday at Halc Stadium. Tickets are on sale currently at the Anderson Recreation Center till 7:30 tonight and tomorrow night, and at the Lompoc Aquatic Center during regular business hours. Sorry, had to give you a little plug. And I'm going to turn the microphone over to Sarah Wallin, who can speak on behalf of the Community Outreach Program at Imre's. Thank you, Sarah.
So I'd just like to say that on behalf of Imre's and the Community Outreach Team, for which we have our -- some of our members today, that we are very proud to be able to present the check for $10,000 for the Firework Show. Myself and my family have gone to the Firework Show for the past seven years that we've been here, and I can tell you that it's a great event, lots of family fun, and the Parks and Rec Department do a great job at putting on such a great show. So we're really appreciative of that, and we're very happy to present the check. And we are also very involved in the community, a lot of different community outreach opportunities that Imre's has done this past year, as well as some things that we're doing this year. We are involved in some of the local schools. We're partnering with the city and Parks and Rec. We want to look at Ryan Park as an adoption so that we can do some different outreach projects there and do some improvements so that we can make the Lompoc community an even better place to live and work. So thank you very much, and again, very proud to present the check.
We've got to get shorter. Still hold hands. Look over. Just for those of you who remember, a little while back, we built a kids' fun motorcycle park in three days to qualify for the grant of $998,000, which we were conditionally awarded last Friday by the state of California. We would not have been able to get it done in the timeframe we got it done had these guys not come up with a loader, a loader operator, a compactor, and various other things that mysteriously showed up as we were trying to get everything done. So we want to thank you guys for that, too, because that levered -- that effort by you all and all of the volunteers leveraged this really large grant. So, thanks.
Great. Thank you.
And next, we will have our Economic Development Director, Assistant City Administrator Teresa Gallivan, and the Economic Development Committee will give us an update on the economic development
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members, members of the public. I'm Steve Pepe, the Chair of the Economic Development Committee, and this is going to be our second quarterly report on our activities. And this slide is the same cast of characters that you've seen before. Our report today has five areas. Teresa's going to go next and describe her activities, some of which are independent of and some of which are coordinated with us, and so that you and the public can have a full picture of what's going on. Next, I'm going to do our project tracking report, which will go through the projects we're working on, generally how we track them and what our activities are. Following that, Janelle, our Vice Chair, is going to do the meetings and other matters that we've engaged in for the first four months of the year, and we -- and our project update list of some of the projects that we talked at our last meeting. And finally, Jeremy Ball is going to finish up with a tagline for the city in response to questions that we received in the past from some members of the city council. And with that, Teresa's up next.
Thank you, Steve. I have handouts here I'd like to share with council, and there are handouts available as well over here for audience members. That's the first set. Here's another set. This corresponds with all of the presentations that Chairman Pepe discussed. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As Steve outlined, we do want to change the format up for our quarterly report a little bit here. And one of the first things I'd like to share with you is a review of economic indicators for the city of Lompoc. One of the first indicators we'll -- I would like to take a look at with you is our annual sales tax trends. And did everybody get the handouts they need? Okay. Annual sales tax trends. What we have here, you'll see, is from 2006 through 2012, our annual sales tax revenue actuals. And as you can see, in 2006, we were at an annual sales tax revenue of a little over $4 million. And that trend went down to a low of 2009-10 of a little more than $3.1 million. And since then, we have seen it creeping up, and in 2011-12, we were at $3.68 million. Now, we are continuing to finalize numbers for the 2012-2013 fiscal year. However, we do anticipate, we do project, to see an increase in sales tax revenue over last year, and so that trend is increasing, and so that is positive news. We do expect those estimated revenues to be an increase over the last fiscal year, and by our next quarterly report, we will have those annual sales tax revenue numbers to share with you finalized. One of the next economic indicators we'd like to review with you is our annual TOT, which is transient occupancy tax that is charged for hotel room night stays. And again, we go from 2006 to -- through 2012. And you can see in 2006, 2007, we had $1.37 million in annual TOT revenue. That increased a little bit the following year, and then leveled out at about $1.4 million for the next couple of years, an increase, $100,000 increase, the following year in 2010-11, and then a significant drop in 2011-12. I understand that coincided with the Best Western franchise leaving the city of Lompoc. We are -- we have trends. We have the first nine months in for 2012-13 fiscal year, and based upon that, we project that for 2012-13, we'll see an increase of anywhere from 5% to 17.5% increase in revenue over last year. So again, we're seeing a -- we project a positive increase in revenue for TOT. And we will have those numbers finalized by the time of our next quarterly report. Another valuable economic indicator to track is capital investment in the community. Here, we see capital investment numbers based upon annual permit valuations in the thousands. Annual permit valuations, whenever a project comes through the city and they pull permits, the project developer needs to provide us with an estimate of the value of their project. So this is what is reflected here in capital investment in the community. In 2006-7, we see over $62 million. $62.8 million was invested in our community. Then it swings quite wildly from there, and we see that in 2012, we do actually have actual numbers for 2012-13 on this slide. So in 2012-13, we saw a fivefold increase in the investment made in our community over the previous fiscal year, and we realized revenues, investment, capital investment in our community of over $39 million. And there is a footnote there that does explain that the Lompoc District Hospital had two projects, one in 2006-7 and one in 2012-13. The 2012-13 was valued at $14 million, so that does contribute to the fivefold increase over the previous year. Again, a trend in a positive direction and a valuable investment in our community. Another important economic indicator is employment. And this chart here is reflect -- this was provided by the Santa Barbara County Workforce Investment Board. A couple of weeks ago, they issued a news release. It was disseminated and provided an update on unemployment rates. So this chart actually reflects unemployment rates. And the -- so it has unemployment rates for Santa Barbara County, and the city of Lompoc is right -- I don't know if you can see that, right there in the middle. And in January, we had an unemployment rate of nearly 15%. It has progressively, month over month, decreased, and in May was at 10%. So while this trend is moving in the right direction, we are seeing a decrease in unemployment. We do know that there still is considerable work to do in this area in the creation of jobs as we remain the highest unemployment rate in the county. So those are some of the indicators I wanted to share with you this evening, and now I'd like to jump into the activity that has taken place in the last quarter that I've been involved in to facilitate economic development in the city of Lompoc. And I have this broken up into some different sectors, so I can talk about activity that's taken place with industrial, airport, or technology projects. First and foremost, we have the Denmat consolidation that was complete -- completed in this last quarter, and they had their open house last week. And I just have a couple of photos to share with you from that. It's -- this is a really big coup for the city of Lompoc, and it has taken a village to make this happen. There are so many people to thank for the customer service that has been provided to Denmat. They were very complimentary of all city staff. It takes many, many departments to make something like this happen. This is Denmat's world headquarters on Central Avenue. It's a 92,000-square-foot facility, has a complete dental lab, learning center, manufacturing, warehouse and handling center, a global call center, a print shop, and offices that accommodate their 400 employees. So it is a real exciting thing to see this facility open, and the transformation that has taken place in that 92,000-square-foot building is phenomenal. If you haven't been in it, it is worth taking a tour, and they put on a fabulous open house last week, just a state-of-the-art facility. The next project is the Epic Cooling Project, which is under construction in our industrial area. Also, in the last quarter, I met with another developer of industrial property, along with Mayor Lynn and Council -- City Administrator Laurel Barcelona. I participated in a couple of conference calls, along with Chairman Pepe, and did some follow-up with a developer of a spaceport out of New Mexico to get some ideas and insights about our property up by Helen -- Allen Hancock College. I attended the American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics Policy Symposium on civilian application of UAVs, a California perspective, and that is particularly of interest to our region because the commercial application for this technology is primarily in agriculture and public safety, two things we have a lot of around here. So that was -- that was a valuable, insightful symposium. And our city has -- we have stepped forward in support of Ventura County's bid to be one of six FAA-designated UAV test sites, providing letters of support for them. I also coordinated a roundtable discussion with some stakeholders, Councilmember Costa, Mayor Lynn also joined in that, and members of our Economic Development Committee. This roundtable discussion and staff with Dr. Delora Zimmerman, who is an economic development strategist with the Economic Alliance in Northern Santa Barbara County, also known as Econ NSBC, centered primarily around our industrial area, airport area, and uses of that area and opportunities. So it was a very good discussion. Also, I participated in the Regional Innovation Advisory Council and the Jobs and Economic Development Initiative Steering Committee that was coordinated by Senator Hannah Beth Jackson's office, and that is an ongoing effort to look for an innovation corridor in our region. So Lompoc was at the table in these regional discussions. I'm also a board member for the UCSB Economic Forecast, and on May 3, we had our annual economic forecast held here for Northern Santa Barbara County, and valuable information comes out of that UCSB economic forecast. So that gives you a sense of what has taken place, a summary of activities in the last quarter. And my quarterly report is reflective of April through June. I'm just going to zip through those real quick. Okay. In the area of retail, commercial, there was follow-up. I had follow-up with several brokers and four leads that I followed up on and worked with, continued to work with staff on a economic development loan that is coming forward to city council, an application for an economic development loan. And we had two openings in the last quarter. We had the opening, obviously, of Rocket Town, a very big deal for the city, and of Fallis. For the area of downtown, worked with a couple of leads as well, and featured properties in the downtown, Old Town District as part of two property tours. I hadn't spoke with Executive Director of Paso Robles Downtown about the Main Street program. The Economic Development Committee has been desirous of learning more about Main Street programs and how that their practices and their model might be valuable for our downtown revitalization as well. So we had that connection made. The Divine Wine Bar opened in this quarter, so it was nice to see that open again. Also, in this last quarter, we had an ad hoc committee of the Economic Development Committee and staff meet on the Transit Center site, and the proposal was brought forward to council on May 14 and approved for a downtown location. Also, we continue to work, staff continues to work on the sidewalk project in front of the Lilly Building that is currently at Caltrans for review. In the area of housing, in the last quarter, met with three different developers and thought had extensive follow-up with one. Part of those meetings also included Mayor Lynn and City Administrator Laurel Barcelona. And Cypress Court on East Ocean held its grand opening in this past quarter. Restaurants. The community and Economic Development Committee has been very concerned about having a variety and diversity, a variety of restaurants, and especially with the public safety training facility coming online at the beginning of the new calendar year. We want to be sure that we capture all of the -- those attending training and that they enjoy the restaurants and other amenities we have to offer here in the city of Lompoc. So in the last quarter, I've worked with eight different restaurant leads, participated in three different meetings. Of those meetings, two of them involved site tours of different properties. And in the last quarter, four different restaurants have opened in the city of Lompoc: Umamiya Sushi, Papa John's, Ike's Barbecue, and, as I mentioned, Divine Wine Bar. Wineries also represent a great draw and industry for our region. We have four projects that we've worked with in the last quarter that I've had a hand-on discussions with, and one of those involves a potential expansion. We also continue to work on bringing a hotel, another hotel, to Lompoc, and as we can see, the public safety training facility is going to be bringing a lot more visitors to our city, and we'd like to be able to have a place for everyone to go. So there have been three leads that I've worked with, and one meeting I participated in in regard to that. Recreation is a big part of our strategic initiative as well. Of our three initiatives in our strategic plan, recreation and tourism is one of them. So I would be remiss if I didn't mention all the great things we have going on in recreation, and this last quarter has been a very busy one. Starting with this past weekend, our very first criterion, and I want to thank Joanne Plummer of Recreation Division, Chief Ralston of our Police Department, Chief Lattipower of our Fire Department and our Fire Department, Ken Ostini, the Chamber, the Lompoc Police Foundation, Stump Grinder Productions, and numerous volunteers that all made this happen. I think for a first-time event, it was a fabulous event. It was very exciting to see the cyclists, and I'd like to ask Joanne Plummer to please come up and give us a little briefing on the feedback she's received and the impressions from this first event.
Thank you, Teresa. Well, it was a very exciting event this weekend, a very exciting time in Lompoc. We have some preliminary statistics available from Sunday's race, and we saw 345 riders merge onto Lompoc to take part in the very first Valley of Flowers Criterion, which was part of the inaugural 805 Criterion Weekend. The first race on Saturday was held in Buellton, and Buellton had 398 racers. So we did very well in a second-day event for 345 racers. Of those racers, 40 were from Santa Barbara County, 10 were from San Luis Obispo County, 20 were from Ventura County. The majority of our racers, the other 275, traveled primarily from the Southern California regions. However, it is important to note, we did see riders as far north as Portland, Oregon, as well as to the east of us in Las Vegas. So it was really exciting, lots of great racing, lots of positive comments. In speaking with Lisa Tinello, who worked our registration table, typically, she is the point where everybody comes and complains about everything under the sun, and she said this was the absolute best race she has ever participated in. At the registration desk, there were zero complaints from any racers or any spectators her way, lots of positive comments about our course, lots of positive comments about our community members that participated in putting on the event, and lots of positive comments about how welcoming Lompoc was. So big kudos to Lompoc this weekend. They really made a mark on the Criterion racers in California. And also, Lisa wanted to point out that she has worked a lot of first-time races, and never in her lifetime has she seen a first-time race with this kind of turnout, number one, and number two, that was done to the level of professionalism that this race was put on. From the coordination of Mike Hecker and the Stump Grinder Productions to the entire committee, all the individuals that Teresa mentioned, including our Public Works staff, including our Streets Division, and Mike Luther, they did a fantastic job. Lot of volunteers were on the streets at 3:45 in the morning to make this race happen. And special thanks also to the Lompoc Police Foundation, who took the initial step and took the lead alongside with promoter Mike Hecker to make this event happen, and also to councilmembers Costa and Homdal and Mayor Lynn for coming out and presenting those awards and actually starting and shooting off some of our races. So again, everybody loved the event, and most importantly, loved Lompoc and is anxious to return. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne. It was very exciting. And Mike Luther, your team did a great job. Thank you for mentioning that. And Chief Ralston actually brought this idea up over a year ago, so the vision to do that. Thank you for your perseverance and sticking to that vision and making it come to reality, and for council's support very much. Other activities in recreation, as Mayor Lynn mentioned earlier, in the last quarter, we've been working on a grant application to the Off-Highway Vehicle Department for the state, and we submitted our grant application in two parts. And on Friday, we received news that they had received additional funding and that we would be -- they have the intent to award to the city of Lompoc nearly a million-dollar grant for the development of the motorsports park at the Lompoc Airport. So we will be bringing back to council after we've talked to the state about the next steps and a resolution and potential contract, that item. Also this week, we have the Fourth of July Firework Show. The gates open at 5:30, and as Joanne mentioned, pre-sale tickets are still available. The J and Ballpark, that was completed actually at the end of March, but I wanted to just share with you that that project, those renovations to that ballpark have allowed us to secure three tournaments, Little League tournaments on the ball field there for this summer that we had not had in the past. So we wanted to share those results of the economic impact and the improvements that were made. Another project that we've been working on in the last quarter, we've had a couple of different meetings on the snack shack at the Aquatic Center, the development of a snack shack, and this is one of Don Palmerville's projects, and we have made a breakthrough in this last quarter on some different discussions that can take this to the next stage and fruition, so the Aquatic Center can realize some revenues from that development. We continue to support the Bike Skills Park and the development that the volunteer group is working on, and the Kids Motor Park. The, as the land manager of that facility, we work closely to make sure that the volunteers that are managing the facility, we have a coordinated effort. So other areas of investment include the Chamber contract renewal. That was done at the last council meeting, and that continues to cement our investment in tourism and outreach. And we also have a meeting next week to discuss the strategic and marketing plan that council has requested, so we're moving forward on that. And I participated in a panel for economic development, along with Mayor Lynn and members of the community that the Chamber organized. So that gives you a summary of activities in the last quarter that I participated in and was part of. I also would like to just bring you to this quarterly summary of impacts. So I mentioned all of these projects. I think that's one, two, three. Eight different projects that came online or are in process this past quarter, and those eight projects represent 474 jobs, and I think if we count what Fallis, we don't have the information from Fallis yet on their jobs, however, if it's anything close to Marshals, then we would be exceeding 500 jobs represented by these eight projects. These eight projects also represent These eight projects also represent an increase of more than 112,000 square feet in industrial and commercial space that is being utilized within our city. And those facilities represent an investment in our community of more than $5.7 million. So, this is a summary of the impacts of what has been going on in economic development in the community for this last quarter. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Chairman Pepe to talk about the Economic Development Committee report.
There is some overlap between Teresa's report and ours, so I won't go through some of the things. But at your February meeting, you requested that we report on the projects and their progress and the volunteer time, which has been dedicated to Economic Development Committee. So, we've set up two ways of doing it. The first is a project tracking workbook, which we will get to in a minute. And I've broken it down into several components. There's our original five-year strategic plan, which has timetables and goals in it. There's our 2013 Strategic Plan Update, which added some additional projects. And then there are directives from the City Council, either individually or collectively, to get involved in various matters. And then there are opportunities, which have been presented to Lompoc, that we've been asked to get involved with. The information in this document, and it's kind of, of small space to fit it all in, briefly describes the project, its status, and which members are working on the project. This is our internal tool, how we keep track of what we're doing and who's doing it and when it's supposed to be completed. And then the second part is, which Janelle will go through, is the EDC meetings in addition to our regular standing committee meetings, which tells you where we've been spending some of our time and some of our efforts. You have all of these in front of you, so I won't go through all of them. But our first subcommittee or goal is a supportive business environment initiative, and we've listed the projects on the left side. And you'll notice in the center, under Status, I've indicated the ones that are part of our five-year strategic plan. As you go down the page, you'll see the ones that are part of our 2013 strategic plan. And some of these are, have the ability to be quite positive and a very large impact. The bottom one, a major university is thinking about expanding, and that was, that came to us and we're working on it. If it comes to fruition, that will be a significant boost. But that's the kind of project that you're looking five or 10 years down the road, it's not going to happen tomorrow. The next slide, which is even busier, is our second goal or our second subcommittee, that's Launching Lompoc into the 21st Century Initiative. And again, I've broken it down the same way, but here I've changed the order. If you go down in the middle, you'll see about the third one down, that there are directives from the City Council, and those are five matters we got involved with, some of them which took extensive amounts of time. And again, I won't go through all of them, but the Old Town Specific Plan with the Planning Commission was one that continues to be ongoing and requiring a lot of our resources. We got involved with the EEG for the ENA, for the California Space Enterprise Center, which unfortunately didn't work out. And now we've been asked to get involved with the RFP to help move that project forward, which we're doing. So, there are five matters there that are not in our strategic plan. Next, down in the middle, you'll see the opportunity, which has been presented to us in various areas. And again, the leading one there, the Allen Hancock Public Safety Center, required a lot of resources and a lot of effort on our part in the spring, early summer, a lot of it done by Janelle and Jeremy, who are here and will be talking on other matters. There's some overlap with Teresa, like the JM Ballpark fields, and others, the winery parking regulations came in through the Planning Commission, and we worked on that as well. If we go to the next slide, which is a little easier to read, this is again Launching Lompoc Into the 21st Century, the five-year strategic plan, you'll notice we've completed one of them. The third one down, we're 0 for 4. What that means is, we've talked to two major hotel operators about establishing a destination resort here and were unsuccessful. We've talked to two investors who are investing in Santa Barbara County in destination resorts, unfortunately not in Lompoc, and we were unsuccessful on that one. And the Old Town Offices on the first floor, we completed that with the cooperation of the Planning Commission. Our third subcommittee or goal is marketing and public relations. And again, I've developed, I've broken it up into the same thing. The first one showing the, what was in our 2013 Strategic Plan Update, the matters that have been completed. The Allen Hancock Public Safety Center, both internal and external marketing has been a large consumer of our time. Then at the bottom in the middle is the five-year strategic plan initiatives. The reason I've broken it up this way is because I'm anticipating at some point, somebody's going to say, "We've looked at your strategic plan, and you had all these timetables and goals, and you didn't achieve them all." Part of that's going to be because they were items that just didn't work out, but part of it is, we have limited resources, our major asset are ourselves, and there are only so many things we can be working on. So, to the extent that the City Council asks us to get involved in matters, Planning Commission wants us to get involved in matters, and others want us to get involved. We've been doing that, but to do that, we then have to sort of prioritize where we're going. And being a farmer, I'm always looking for the low-hanging fruit, so I'll go after that first. And some of these other matters that we thought were important in reflection, we've decided they can wait, or there are things that are more important to deal with right now. So, as we go down the road, our five-year strategic plan is going to get out of whack in terms of its timetables and goals. And we will review that, and I think it's appropriate to ask why that's happening, but I wanted to give you a heads up that part of it is because of the other initiatives we've been involved with. And with that, I'll turn it over to Janelle, who's going to talk about the activities the volunteers have been doing and working on.
Thank you, Chairman Pepe. Counsel, staff, public. We've been very busy, and I don't know that we noticed how busy we were being until we were asked to sort of review everything we're doing on top of getting together for our standing committee meetings. So, we put together a listing, and this covers January through April of this year, our first quarter, of all the different meetings we've been having in excess of just coming together for our executive or our current monthly meetings. So, as you can see, we've broken it down with meetings, initiative or opportunities. So, if it was a City Council meeting we came to, or it's related to one of the initiatives, or it's an additional committee that we're meeting with, like the planning or the beautification, so we've indicated that. Then we have a short description of what the topic of maybe some of that meeting is or that task was. We're tracking the date. And rather than calling out individual members, because that's not what we saw this as, we called out how many members were in attendance, because it was more about the manpower than who's doing the work. We really wanted to show the level of investment by the whole group. And then finally, any notes that we wanted to keep track of that might help us call something forward or reach out to somebody after having one of these meetings, we felt it was important to put some of those notes in there. So, what you'll see is that we've had some interesting things, where we've done things like discussed food in the ghetto, and how can we bring that in, had university satellite campus discussions. The JM Ballfield Opening Day, those are the fun parts, to show up and participate in that. And then you have the hard work, like working with Allen Hancock to research other competition for the Public Safety Center, what they're doing, how we can tap into that, how we can share that, how we can do something similar. Launching a Facebook page for us, we're getting up to speed on that and figuring out what kind of information we want to pass on and how to utilize that to not only keep the local community involved, but also draw attention from a wider group of individuals. There are several pages of this, and you'll see that we continue to meet with lowest caps. We continue to have ad hoc meetings for the Planning Commission. We go on to discuss things like, what are the individual things going on out at Hancock that we might need to get involved with to help those contracts come to fruition outside of just the coursework? So, I think it was a great request to ask us to look at the tracking and hope this is enough information for the council and the community to see that the commitment is not just to showing up at the meetings and talking a lot, it's a lot of stepping outside of our comfort zones and having meetings and discussions and introducing ourselves to people and putting our faces out there to let everyone know that Lompoc's ready to do business and that we are looking for a new and innovative ways to do this. So, that being said, one of the big projects we've been working on is a tagline for the city, and I'm going to pass that off to Jeremy Ball to discuss. Oh, there's a page I forgot, my apologies. This probably overlaps some of what Teresa had said. So, we have the Old Town Sidewalk Status, Caltrans does have that up for review. We had our first swim meet as a result of the timers being put into place, and that was with the Los Padres League in April, so that was really exciting to see that come to fruition. The Transit Transfer Center, this was a request from council for the Economic Development Committee to work with the Planning Department and the Engineering Department to come up with the best idea to make use of the funds, as well as have a centralized area that's a little bit larger than the one that is currently utilized outside of Albertson. So, that has been successful in that the recommendation's been made and council's in support of that, and it's gone back for a detailed plan to be put together. The RFP for City Land Up by Allen Hancock, while we encouraged you to discontinue the ENA with the EEG, we are now involved with looking at what's the best method to move forward to actually do the best project possible for not only Lompoc, but for the property that is available. And the request for information or interest has been some of the first steps being recommended to us by some of the consultants we're discussing with, so we'll put together a proposal and come back to you on that. And now I will hand it over to Kenny Mini-Member Ball to talk about Tagline.
Thank you, Janelle. Good evening, members of the council, staff, and citizens of the community. Real quickly, just, I think I only have one slide to go over, so that makes my job easy. If we could put up the slide about the tagline for the city, there we go. I'll just go through it very quickly and make a couple of quick points and go on from there. So, the idea with the tagline behind the, or using a, perhaps using a new tagline for the city, I'll just go through this and make a few points. So, the goal with that is to better represent the city's established industries and the initiative to attract additional businesses matching these. The reason behind this is, we felt that the current tagline focuses more on tourism rather than the industries unique to Lompoc. So, perhaps the current tagline could be used by the Visitors Bureau as a continued outreach towards tourism specifically. In our research, Lompoc has a long and vital agricultural community combined with a strong and growing aerospace history. This is a unique juxtaposition that could draw interesting tech businesses to both areas, as well as provide continued job growth for the local population's skill sets. So, over 12 ideas were represented, five presented to the committee with the following two recommendations. The top choice was Valley of Wine, Space, and Agriculture. Second choice was Leading Edge of Aerospace and Agriculture. So, to just kind of summarize what our feelings are, is in a positive way, as we continue or the city attempts to further its outreach towards the business community and other areas, seeking that they see the potential in Lompoc. Some of these industries that are, are current could benefit from just that first tagline being the memorable thing that they may see, the first thing that they see could be one of these things. And we feel like it would represent the current state of what Lompoc is and what it would like to become, perhaps slightly better than the current. So, that's all on that. Thank you very much. Pass it back to Steve.
Thank you. That concludes our presentation. We're available for any questions or comments or suggestions from any of the council members.
Counselor Lingle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Steve, Janelle. Great report, very inclusive. One of the things I'm disappointed in, not with the report, but just disappointed in maybe, maybe us as a city, is the Destination Resort, a 0 for 4. And sometimes you don't want to hear the answer, so you shouldn't ask the question, but why are they, why are we 0 for 4? Is it, I realize probably we need to still clean up our cities, we need to, the two entrances to our city, I know that, you've talked about that several times. But what is it that we need to do to make that 1 for 3 instead of 0 for 4?
The 0 for 4 is, two of them, as I mentioned, were major hotel chains with whom I had a relationship in my other life and talked to them. And basically, what their position is, is that unless you have a very extraordinary, unique area, most hotel systems are not building their own hotels. They're finding a group of investors or somebody who wants to build a hotel, and they'll come in, and they'll tell you how to build it, and how many sheets you need, and pillowcases and teaspoons and all that sort of stuff, and they'll run it for you. So, from their point of view, unless you've got an investor, a group of investors, they're not, they're not going to pursue it. They're more in the management business than they are in the hotel business. The two private investors are people who built fairly substantial, fairly well-known. One's building it, one acquired, one operations. And again, they don't think, at least at this point in time, that we've developed our wine industry sufficiently enough. We don't have a vibrant, ongoing restaurant industry, and they see those two as being sort of the preconditions before they're going to think about putting in a Destination Resort. And a Destination Resort is a high-end hotel where people go to go to the hotel. They don't go to the particular town or area or whatever. And so, they think at this point in time that we don't have enough matters accomplished in the restaurant industry and in the wine industry to justify that. And that's always, again, it's always hard to get the pioneer, the person who can look over the horizon, as for example, Richard Sanford did when everybody here saw grazing land and row crops, and he saw one of the great Pinot Noir vineyard areas, and he was right, and he started it, and then it took another 10 years before Babcock came along and a few others, and all of a sudden in mid-'90s, you had a land rush. But until you get that pioneer who can come in and show that it can be done and done successfully, it's hard to, to get other people interested. We're going to keep working on it. Our strategic plan had a goal of doing that in a year, and we're not going to make that. But it's one of our primary goals, and we keep focused on it, but that's a rather long way to answer your question.
That's okay. That's, that's the answer I was expecting, and I didn't want to hear. So, okay, you mentioned food, restaurants, and wine as some of the key factors in getting this. I think we're progressing pretty well with the wine. I was speaking to the choir right here, about the wine, but is, is the other part of the equation, I mean, it obviously is a restaurant. Is there something we as a city need to do to make this more attractive, to get this restaurant here in town? What are, you mentioned that you're lacking with tools, the committee, so I'm asking you, what do we, as a city now, what do we need to do to help you with this?
Well, I, I think the city... Well, I, I think the city is doing all that it can do, given the restraints that apply to it. I know the mayor and others have met with, with restaurateurs we've brought into town. They've shown them the properties that are available, there are seven or eight that are, that are vacant. They've indicated how fast things could get done, and people in the eastern end of the valley are amazed that you can do things in less than a year and get it through the Planning Commission and get it approved and start breaking ground. So, we have to keep telling those stories, and I think we just have to keep pushing the rock up the hill, and eventually, one of these times, we're going to get to the top. But it's gonna, it's gonna take, again, a pioneer, somebody who's going to come in and see a great opportunity here with, especially with the Public Service Training Center and what may well happen at Vandenberg with SpaceX, and look down the road a couple of years and say, I ought to be in there first and get established, and that's, that's what we need. And I think the city and the staff have been very, very helpful. The city council's been very cooperative. We call you up, you show up, you rearrange your schedules, you make the right pitches. It's, again, I think we're doing all where we can, given our resources, and part of it is, the reputation of Lompoc is not the best in, in the valley, and we have to do our best to attract people like the folks who came to the bike race and show them that, gee, it's not more fun being over here when it's 75 or 80 degrees than it was in Buellton or Los Olivos at 102, and that people noticed. And it's a revelation to some folks that you can really avoid triple digits by going 25 miles to the west.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Councilor Costa.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. Thank you very much for the report. I agree, it was a great report, and I think some of it was in response to what I had requested last time, and I think you guys did a great job at providing the information. There's so many wonderful members of the committee, sometimes it's hard to see the whole picture, and so now I can really see where the efforts are going and feel confident that nothing's slipping through the cracks. I mean, this is so comprehensive, so it's great to have it all in one document that I can carry with me wherever I go, so thank you for that. Um, there was a couple of things. You mentioned that there's so much energy being taken up by the Allen Hancock Public Safety Center, and rightfully so. I think we need, from now until groundbreaking, that really should be one of our main focuses. I know we agree that we get that one chance for, for that perception when these folks come into town, and the word will spread quickly between the folks who, who travel to Lompoc. So, I, I commend you for that and would just encourage you to continue that. If there's anything you think we can do to help that, please let us know, because I think that that is really important, so thank you for that.
The person who deserves the credit for that is Janelle. She's been above and beyond the call of duty with a lot of help from Jeremy. It became almost a full-time job for her for about two or three months to get all that organized, so she's done great work on that. And the rest of us have pitched in where, where we can and whenever she's asked us to help out.
So, thank you for that, and don't stop yet. I know it may not feel like, what's the impact, but when they get here, that's when it'll matter, so thank you so much. Continue, continue. One suggestion and then one question. My suggestion is that even when a project is considered complete on here, I know that we can't do it all the time, but let's try to follow up as much as we can, because sometimes we feel like, you know, we checked that box, that's out of the way, but I think sometimes it requires a little bit of follow-up to ensure the success of some of our efforts are continued and not just short-term. So, that's one suggestion I would make. The other thing is, I did have a question about the food in the wine ghetto. It says completed, but I was just curious if I can get a little bit more detailed update on that, because I'm not sure how that's considered completed.
Well, it's completed in the sense that I met with Steve of Sissies, who had some concerns about overregulation by the county and inability to, to put the project together. I had met the new head of Health Services for the county, had another, another function, chatted with him, told him about the problem. We had a meeting, and he and Steve went through it, and Steve is convinced that there aren't any serious impediments to him going into the ghetto and on a regular basis and delivering sandwiches and drinks and that sort of stuff. And I asked, last time I was in Sissies, I asked him where he was, and he, he was shooting to get it going either last weekend or this weekend. Ideally, what you need is a facility there, but at least in the short run, in the short term, if he can go in there and find that it's profitable, makes sense, and bring his coolers and his truck in there and, and sell basically the sandwiches out the back of his truck, and if that works and it works out well, then businesspeople being businesspeople will say, gee, we can make a lot more money if we put a facility either in the ghetto or next door or across the street, and that'll be stage, stage number two. There has been some opening up of the properties in the ghetto, and the Zodovich property opening up will also draw some of the folks who are in the ghetto, so where they were all contracted out, we may see a place where there'll be vacant storefronts, and that, again, would be an opportunity for somebody to come in there, but that's what it's going to take. And again, you need a pioneer who's going to go in there and show that it can be done and you can make money at it, and other people will quickly follow. The food trucks is another issue that we've discussed here several times, which is another short-term solution that we've been unable to avail ourselves of.
So, I think that that's something that, to me, would be considered ongoing. I'm excited to hear about Steve, but you know, there's so many factors, and you know, he's a businessman, so he's going to make his decisions based on those factors, so we have to keep an open mind and hope that maybe we can attract others, because I think that right now, there is a really big perception problem that the city of Lompoc is the one putting up the barriers for opening in the wine ghetto. At least, that's what I, it's been expressed to me in multiple occasions. So, if we can work against that, like Mary Lynn has done diligently with expediting processes and saying that Lompoc is business-friendly, I think we need to focus on showing restaurants' properties there as well for potential locations. I know it's a little tough, because the economics of it, it's a weekend-focused thing, but I would say that for, in my perspective, that's still ongoing, although I am excited to hear about the development.
I, I think, when I, when we put down completed, it was completed in the sense that there perceived to be a barrier from the Santa Barbara County Health Department that was preventing it, and after meeting and working through it, there is no barrier. It's not been completed in the sense that there's somebody over there serving food on a daily basis, so that's a correct observation, and we'll, we'll change it to half-completed.
I, I like that, I like that. And then, Mary Lynn, I just had a few questions for Theresa. If that's okay, or I guess more like suggestions. I wanted to also thank you for your quarterly update, because I think that, again, this is a comprehensive view of everything that's going on as far as the positives. I think that it's great, I like the photos, I think that, that this was wonderful. The one thing I think we need to do, though, to complete that picture, is talk about some of the economic development challenges. You did talk about unemployment, but I know that there was business closures. I think the Gemini may have been one of the closures in the past quarter. Also, relocation of businesses, obviously, the winery that I was working for, Loring Wine Company, has moved out of Lompoc into Buellton, so, um, not necessarily because of the city, I will say that, but just that there's been some movement, and I think that we should capture that in this as well to see the whole picture, so I would suggest that. And then the other thing that I would say that I said to the Economic Development Committee as well, and I'm sorry, did you want to, uh, was that I think that follow-up is going to be key. So, when we have a business that opens, I think it's key to, to the best of our abilities, I know we're always looking for new opportunities, but offer help and support for those businesses to ensure their longevity and success over the long term. So, um, you know, if there's a, a business that needs a little bit of help and they just don't, there's maybe a small roadblock, we can help with certain things. It, it was just a suggestion, I thought, maybe helpful. Um, I know the bike park, for example, I expected it to be done already, and I know it's not, so I think that we need to be very conscious that we need to continue, even though we checked the boxes, maybe it's, we feel like our side's completed, we should probably continue with our efforts for follow-up help and support.
Councilor Homel.
Yeah, I enjoyed listening to the report and what came out of it and everything else, but a lot of things we've just got through here is that, the only reason why people think Lompoc's bad is because the people in Lompoc say it is. The outsiders come to town, like we just, this criterion, they thought it's the greatest place they could ever come to, so they're coming here. So, if we stop as Lompoken's saying it's bad here, or the Santa Barbara News Press or Santa Maria Times, they're not going to do you any good, you're going to have to sell yourself. I've been here long enough to know that is one of our major problems, is that we've got to be happier with ourselves, that we're doing a good job. The committee did an excellent job, and it's interesting, on the two bottom of, the Valley of Wine, Space, and Agriculture, and then the Leading Edge of Aerospace and Agriculture, it's going to be tough to ever say which one of those two to be, but it's one. And Agriculture's been around here, and the town was settled by Agriculture, so having that a part of anything in there would be a major component. Theresa's done an excellent job. I've had, I've talked to hotel operators, and I've also talked to some restaurant operators, and she'll give you new information that Janelle has put together for her on what's coming to town, and people don't realize it. You can still talk to somebody, they don't know what the, the true concept of what's happening at Allen Hancock College and what's coming in there. And the Denmat was fantastic, and the other positive at Denmat is that the employees that they hire from Lompoc are excellent. They really enjoy that. And years ago, in the latter part of the '90s, we did a survey of all the people leaving Lompoc, it was 8,000 to 12,000 a day, going south to work, and it showed the average and quality of employees we have here, and we just don't sell it like we should have, because they're going to Santa Barbara, if they don't have to ride the bus or drive the car to Santa Barbara, they'd work here in Lompoc, and you've got that. We have the quality of it, people out there in, in Lompoc right now, and that's what we need to sell as much, and that's what Denmat liked. They really like what we had, they liked the town, and, uh, I guess about 15 from Santa Maria didn't stay on, and they replaced those 15, I think they had another 15 on top, so they got 400 employees. But if you get a chance to go out there and take a look at it, they're here, they're excited, and they're going to grow. So, all these things are coming down, and now they got, just to be able to sell a restaurant, we both, we've all had restaurant guys come in, I got to go back after another one who hasn't come back for the second time, but, but as individuals, if you go someplace, you see a restaurant, talk to the restaurant manager, say, how would, would, you know, who makes this restaurant? Can you bring them into town? It takes the public, general public, asking as much question as it does anybody else, and let them know what we have here, and we got to go, and your committee's done an excellent job, and this report would be nice to have, for anybody could have it, and they need to have it, so I really want to thank you very much for the job you did.
Councilor Starbuck.
Thank you, Mary Lynn. You know, I'm a huge fan of the Economic Development Committee, but I was just taking some notes tonight, and something occurred to me. Ms. Palmer got up and spoke about the lady that was checking in people at the bike race and how we were the best at this and no hassles, no problems, and it was all great, and now it's forgotten. Developers come in, they're able to get a project through here in two and a half months instead of six months somewhere else, they're done. I, I'm wondering if it wouldn't behoove us as a city that if we took some of these testimonials and put them on our website, we had videos of them, if we were to take written statements of how good we treated people in our Planning and Building Department and put it in the LA Times Business Section, if we wouldn't be able, I, I mean, it seems like we're hearing it all the time, but it's on the dais, it's on TV, it's in a room, it's, it's a rumor, but we've never really taken any testimonials from all these happy people, and I can't see it being really that much harder, maybe, to do something like that. Is that a viable thought, you think?
We actually have. I'll tell you.
Oh, we have?
Yeah, we have. We just haven't told you about it.
I guess I'm the only one that doesn't know anything, but I mean, it would sure be great ads if we had people that were happy doing them.
Yeah.
Thank you again, sorry.
Well, first, I, I think the most salient thing Steve said is that you adapt and take the low-hanging fruit, which is the one thing I've learned about economic development. It's not who you want, it's who wants you, and when they want you, you want to go get them as quickly as possible before they can change their mind. I think one of the most important things that the committee has done is the research on Allen Hancock and the quantification of the number of people that are going to attend, and I need to talk to you a little bit more about some more information that I might need that would help with that. And that's the one thing that has got us past the attention step, if you remember your public speaking class, in talking to another batch of hotel people, is the, the potential of Hancock and also SpaceX, but more so Hancock because of the huge numbers. With regard to the East Side Hotel location on the former Greco property, one of the things that's now, I think, getting a little more interest is the patio area and the five wine tasting rooms that are be, being opened on the south side of the building facing the highway, because that now connects the hotel pad there and the potential hotel pad across the street visually with the wine ghetto, so that it's all kind of together. And that's been playing with some people I've been talking to. So, now I think we need to brag. Fallows Department Store bought a building in another town, and they have yet to be able to occupy the building, and when I found out they'd bought the building, I called up to see if they would like to come to Lompoc, only to find out that they'd already leased the building here, and I can't tell you exactly, but I think they completed in about 70 days and were open, and they're still trying to get occupancy in that building in another town. So, that's a good story that everyone on the council can tell. And then, just the story that I tell to those who are coming here to develop a ground-up project is the Rocket Town Chrysler Project. They submitted their first paperwork on September 15th of last year. They received their conditional use permit from the Planning Commission on November 25th, and then it took a little while to get the paperwork caught up, and then they built the facility using a local contractor and local workers in 100 days exactly. And then, our building department cut them a little slack on something they had ordered but hadn't come in, but it wasn't a health and safety item, and gave them a conditional permit to open, rather than making them sit for another 30 days. So, everybody in the city, the building department, the planning department, everybody worked together, and you will all recall the nice full-page ad that they put in the Lompoc Record thanking all of us. A very bizarre thing happened the other day. I was sharing some information about the hotels with someone, and he was from Sacramento, and he said, "We've heard about you guys in Lompoc, you're very pro-business. We'll talk, we'd like to talk to you about that opportunity." So, how we got to Sacramento, I don't know, but our reputation is spread rather widely, and to your question, Dirk.
They read our testimonials.
Yeah, there you go. We, we have a set of testimonial letters that we've acquired from projects as they were completed, and some of them are really pretty amazing, and, you know, they're shared in the information packet with each perspective that comes to talk to us now. So, you know, you guys on the committee have done a great job. Theresa, you've done a great job. Our staff has backed us up, and we now have the positive reputation that is 180 degrees opposite of the reputation we had two and a half years ago, and the reputation that everyone else still has. If you want to develop a project in this part of the world, you're either going to go to Buellton or Lompoc, or you're going to go to Paso Robles. And I was talking to some folks from San Luis Obispo the other day, and they said, gee, I wish our city could do what you guys do, and I said, well, you know, talk to your city council, because these things can be fixed. So, great job, thanks for your hard work, don't slow down. Don't slow down.
Mary Lynn, I was just curious, so I think putting them on the website is still a great idea.
Oh, absolutely.
So, we can pull quotes from the letters to post on the website, or from just interviews or emails, use photos from events and make, you know, little portions on the website in different pages. I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, any other questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you for your presentation, appreciate your time and your effort and coming down and hanging out with us. Now, I think you guys are going to propose the Tagline ultimately, aren't you? Yeah? They're going to come back with a single recommendation? Okay. Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor, our, our thought was to come, we wanted to come up with three choices, but we ended up with two out of the 10 or 12 we started with, and we were really of the view, we think that the, the city council, or the staff, or the combination ought to make the decision on it. If you want our recommendation, I'll be glad to tell you what it is.
Go ahead and tell us your recommendation.
Well, they were done in the order that we viewed them as, so the one on top is the one that got a few more votes, but it wasn't a landslide, and the second one came in second place but had a fair amount of support behind it. in second place but had a fair amount of support behind it. So we're comfortable with either one of those, but we think really it's the city council's call, not ours.
I like the first one. I'm with you. We could take, we could go for a consensus.
If the council plans on making a decision on which tag it is, we need to bring it back on a published agenda.
Okay. You'll be back.
Thank you. Thanks, Joe.
Now, we have a little presentation from Councilmember Starbuck and myself.
Please remember that this is a shop Lompoc campaign that involves nothing but the city, vehicles, parks. This is not stepping out onto Chamber, Shop Small, or anything else. These are just things we would think about that would enhance the shop local here.
So, Councilmember Starbuck and I actually developed this two years ago, but in talking to the community, it became obvious that one of the difficulties that everybody found was that there were an awful lot of vacant stores, and therefore wasn't any place to shop. And so we decided that we would let economic development take its course, because we knew within any year or so we'd fill all these stores, right? And lo and behold, we have. So now we're ready to go on this campaign, and the purpose of this marketing campaign is to provide the shop Lompoc message in the same graphic design at businesses, city buildings, parks, on local businesses, vehicles, the city general fund vehicles. Additionally, when the city staff, whose salaries are funded by the general fund, delivers services to citizens, they will also deliver the shop Lompoc message. And unfortunately, I'm not very talented, so you got to look at it from out there. This is the graphic that was actually designed in 2008 and graces the number of a lot of business doors in Lompoc, so we chose to go forward with this. And the message is simple: Please shop in Lompoc. Local sales tax pays for your police, fire, parks, and other city services. And then I'll go into some additional parts of that. So the city attorney has reviewed the items that are listed below and found that the sticker signs and cards can legally be placed or used as described. He has also found that the current wording can be legally used, but suggested an alternative wording by changing the phrase from "sales tax pays for," et cetera, to "sales tax helps pay for." The difficulty with that would be, and I didn't bring banners tonight, because I've got some of those already done, that if we decided to change that, we would need to go back and take the stickers off the businesses that have already been stickered. And before I closed my print shop, I printed about 1,000 of these that I'm more than happy to donate to the city and the Chamber to go forward, and we would have to bear the cost of reprinting those. There are current funds budgeted and allocated for the shop Lompoc program, but they might not be adequate if we have to start all over again. So that, the first decision the council will need to kind of decide is when we get down to that. And then here's the list of, the laundry list of things that we think this should be used on. The first one would be Dirk's effort to work with the Chamber to place the sticker on the entry door of all the Lompoc businesses that are willing, and probably at the cash checkout counters also. And number two, work with the Chamber of Commerce to place a sticker on the back bumper of vehicles owned by local businesses, so people will again support local businesses. We would place the sticker on the entry door of all city buildings except the landfill, water, and wastewater plants, because they're not within the general fund, and we would display the sticker at the customer service counters in city buildings. We would place the sticker on the back of all city vehicles for departments that receive general funds. And then, now it's even smaller, because I don't have any big ones left, because the police and fire got them all from me last time, but we would have a specific sticker for police vehicles and police department, and the one for police says, "Local sales tax pays for your police department," and the one for fire says, "It pays for your fire department," to make those a little more specific, because they are the largest funds in the general fund. And we would have those stickers placed on the back of the police and fire vehicles and on their support vehicles, and those stickers would need to be designed a little bit to match the scale of the vehicle, because this sticker on the back of a fire truck would disappear, but on the bumper of a police car would probably be appropriate, and we would rely on the staff to determine that. And then the next rolling billboard that we have available to us would be to place a large vinyl graphic on the back of the Colt buses and stickers on the inside of the buses to remind the riders. And those are, again, mobile billboards running around town. And the next one would be four-by-eight-foot sign boards at the entrance and exit to Lompoc on H Street, East and West Ocean, and Central Avenue, where we have city property. We don't have the ability to put it everywhere, but we have the ability to put it in quite a number of places. And the next one would be to do basically what this is, which is putting the graphic on the back of a business card for general fund city staff members that routinely give their card to the public. And there would be one like this, it would be created for police and fire, and then the other sticker would be used for everybody else. And the next would be to ask the library and museum to place a sticker on their entrance doors, because they receive a lot of general funds, but they're not obviously directly within the council's control. Next would be to work with TAP-TV staff to create a series of public service announcements, PSAs if you will, for TAP-TV featuring various city services paid for by the general fund, and we would ask the police foundation, the fire foundation, the parks foundation to participate and assist in production. And then those same PSAs could be provided to local TV stations. And the next one would be to place one of these graphics on a sign at the entrance to the hike and bike paths around town to remind people that that's what pays to maintain their hike and bike paths, and ask the council to continue the appointment of myself and Councilmember Starbuck to work with the Lompoc Chamber of Commerce, the city staff, on implementing the council's approval of the program we're recommending tonight. And then Councilmember Starbuck and I would provide an update to the council in six months, and we would make recommendations on how to refresh the shop Lompoc program in 12 months, because things wear out. And if you don't keep changing it, it disappears.
I wanted to kind of mention that when I had talked with some of the Chamber and their board about this, that we have 1,000 stickers already. We already have banners. We have everything to go ahead and implement this program in the scale. But I would really think there may be a rebranding of something, something new and different. So that's what the very end here, the number 16 that we talked about, will provide an update, and then maybe a way to refresh this program. So if we continue to move with this, that's what that infers to, is to come up with maybe a little bit different design, something unique to police, something unique to fire, and then unique to us.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I'm not sure what the anticipation was tonight, but because this wasn't on a published agenda for an action tonight, we'll need to bring this back. So I wouldn't suggest that you take a lot of comment tonight, because this really wasn't, what was on the agenda was a presentation, not a discussion amongst the council and a decision by the council.
You know, I asked that very question, and that wasn't how I understood we were doing it tonight, so I guess we're kind of done for now.
Great update, though.
Useless. Okay, moving right along. City Administrator's Report.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Your comment of being useless, I don't think was right, because you got the information out to the general public, it's going to listen to it, and so when we come back for a regular presentation of it, then we'll be able to get some input into it. So I do not believe it was useless.
Okay, good. I feel better about the time spent. City Administrator?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I have no items to report tonight, but I do want to just extend a thank you to Teresa Gallivan and the Economic Development Committee for all your work effort, and it was great to celebrate all the successes tonight and all that you do to help make our community a better place to live. Thank you.
Okay. Any staff requests or announcements outside of yours? No? Okay. Now, oral communications, your opportunity to talk to us about any subject for five minutes. Who has something to say? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communications, and we'll come back to the consent calendar. This evening, a consent calendar contains one item, a payroll voucher for $1,080,000, an expense voucher for $363,000, an expense voucher for $444,000, and credit refunds for $2,208. And if there's no discussion, I accept a motion.
Move to approve the consent calendar?
I'll second.
And is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? Thank you. That passes 5-0. And now, unfinished business, award a project FY13 LB2, the Lompoc Public Library Roofing Project. Craig Dearling.
So, as Mayor Lynn mentioned, I'm Craig Dearling with the City Engineering Division, and I do have some PowerPoint slides, but probably they'll just be to answer any questions that come up, or if anyone needs to see pictures of things, but probably not go through them initially, so they can just be kind of backup information. So as was mentioned, this is an item to recommend award of city project 13 LB2 to remove and replace the roof of the Lompoc Public Library. The existing library roof is at the end of its useful life and has exhibited severe leaking in the spring of 2012, prior to the application of a temporary seal coating. Since then, that seal coat has prevented further leaking, but it isn't anticipated to continue preventing leaking much longer. The city council approved CDBG funding for the project in July of 2012. Staff and the design consulting team presented the selected re-roofing system on January 8th, 2013, and the city received construction bids recently, which are within the approved project budget. If awarded now, the project should begin construction in August and be completed in or by October of this year. And the schedule, that schedule assumes that the library will remain open for its normal business hours and not impact patron use. There is opportunity for potential limited short closures of several days, but we don't anticipate substantial impacts to patron use. Staff recommends, as it says in the staff report, the council relieve the first low bidder best contracting services of their bid in accordance with their request June 5th, and in accordance with Public Contract Code Sections 5100 to 5110. Staff recommends the council award the contract to the second low bidder, Brazos Urethane Incorporated. Staff also recommends the council award an asbestos abatement monitoring consulting contract to URS Corporation, and their work primarily will be to observe the work of the asbestos, so the demolition, removal of the existing roof, and to take air samples daily to make sure the levels inside the library and outside are safe. Staff also recommends the council award an inspection and supplemental construction contract, or construction management contract, to Bikini Defferville Management in order to provide some oversight of the new roof going on, make sure everything's going on correctly, the right thicknesses, the right slopes, the right mixtures, and that the work conforms to contract documents. The project budget, as mentioned in the staff report, allows for only a 10% construction contract contingency, which is less than the typical 15% our staff recommends on projects with risk of unforeseen conditions. And no additional CDBG program income funds are available for the project. As well, entitlement funding cannot be commingled with the program income funding that's already within the project, but staff does feel that the project can still be awarded with the budget provided, and if an unforeseen event necessitates more funding, there's a few sources mentioned in the staff report that it could be explored later. In conclusion, the Lompoc Public Library's roof needs to be replaced. This project will accomplish that re-roofing in a way that addresses the many constraints of the building like we shared in January, and the city has the available funding for the proposed construction budget. I'm open for any questions.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Greg, I do have one question here, and you just spoke of it, where I'm going to use the term wiggle room in this contract, is really not there. We're at a few thousand dollars. If something was to happen, the only income that's going to come in there and bail us out appears is going to be some out of the general fund reserves if this project was to go over. I hate to be the one to bring this up, but would it be cheaper and behoove the city if we were to close the library during parts of this? Because it says here on the overview that we will keep the library open during normal service, the contractor will come in, do this work after hours, et cetera, et cetera. Is it somewhere it would be where we could close the library for a period of time, the contractor could get in, do it, we would not incur the over additional expenses?
At this point, contractually, to get any savings, it would have to be through negotiation and change order, but we did ask that question, had it been bid that way in the first place, and really more of the contractors answered that there wouldn't be substantial savings in doing that. It seems that the larger contractors are able to deal with the limited hours and the schedule, and it's probably primarily the smaller folks that have more, that feel more constrained that way. So the majority of them said that it didn't make a substantial cost difference.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Merlin. I ask this because this isn't the first time we've seen this, but the design consultant's construction cost estimate for the base bid was in the range of $350,000 to $420,000, but the bids came in, I mean, besides the one that had an issue, the bids all came in over $420,000.
Right.
And I'm just curious, what was the main reason for that? Why were we so off?
The design consultant says that the two primary factors are material cost increases since last year when the estimate was made, and the, I guess, a higher degree of asbestos, dealing with the asbestos than may have been anticipated when the estimate was made. We got our asbestos report relatively concurrently with the initial design recommendations, so the specifications for dealing with that and the limited hours of closure and all the related components were not fleshed out at the time the consultant made the estimate.
And does that follow on us, or does that follow on the consultant?
Well, I suppose in a perfect world, where we had more time, we could have done all that first, and then had the design consultant not start until we had the asbestos completely figured out. But we wanted to be able to build it this summer, so certain things were done concurrently. I suppose the budget wouldn't really change had we done it in line. We would have just expected it to be slightly higher, so his estimate would have been maybe $380,000 to whatever, or $400,000 to $475,000 or whatever.
I just want to be sure that if the consultant didn't do an adequate job, but what we expected him to do, there is some, you know, reprehension for that. If there, I mean, this is not way, way off, but it is off, and so that puts us in a tough situation now that we anticipated this amount, as you know, and now we're looking at a higher amount. So I just want to be sure that you feel confident that the consultant had an adequate estimate.
I do, for projects that are more routine, it's easier to get a more precise estimate. For this project, it's a less routine type of roofing, and in our area, we're a little bit off the beaten path for some of the companies that do larger volumes of this type of work. So I would say it's more difficult to get within a percent or two of what the, how the cost is going to turn out, especially nine months before the bids open. So I feel that they did an adequate job.
And then, just a random question. I may have missed it, but for some reason, do we always put about whether it's categorically excluded under NEPA, or is that a new addition?
NEPA is for federally funded, well, federally funded or federal land. If federal environmental rules apply, then we consider NEPA.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you. Okay, we'll open this to oral communications. Anyone like to talk to us about a roof? Anybody? Going once, going twice, gone. Okay. Back to council. Are there any further questions of staff or discussion at this time? Councilmember Hombdahl?
If there's any more discussion, I'm trying to make the motion, staff recommendations.
I'll go ahead and second it.
And is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can we vote, please? That passes five-zero, thank you. And now we move to item number three, new business, the award of the contract to purchase the Type III brush engine. Finally, something fun.
Well, I have fun every day, bearing degrees of fun, however.
You been playing with the Safe and Sane fireworks early?
[laughing]. You know, a younger Kurt, never mind. As I was sitting back there, I realized that this is one of the items that was contained in a report back in December when I did, when staff did an overview of the Olson Report. And this is a recommendation that the Public Safety Commission supported at the time. So I'm pleased to start my presentation off with that. I also would like to comment that even though I'm the one that's standing up here, this staff report is a result of an incredible team made up of finance, our facilities folks, Anthony Garcia in particular, and a representative of every shift in the fire department. So what we're recommending is that you authorize us to purchase one brand-new brush fire engine in the amount of three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and six cents. That is out the door, that's taxed, that's delivered. The what, during the budget season, you approved in our budget funding for this, and the budget amount was for the vehicle and all the equipment, and the total was four hundred and fourteen thousand and some change. So what we're asking you to approve is well within that amount. The balance that's left after we purchase the vehicle is to purchase the equipment, the hose, et cetera, to equip this unit, because we're not going to strip down the one we currently have. The one we currently have will be kept in reserve for use in the city when this one's out on the road. We're proposing to tag on to an Orange County Fire Authority, RFP. The Orange County Fire Authority has recently taken delivery of two of these vehicles. As a matter of fact, that's one of them right there. This is pretty much what the Lompoc unit will look like. However, we've taken some of the high-dollar stuff out of the spec to keep it within our budget. It will, it's already, if we move forward with this, say that we get a tremendous economy of scale, if nothing else, just in the RFP process, writing our own RFP and going through that process is extremely intense. It meets the requirements of our municipal code, authorizing cooperative purchasing and purchasing of policy for cooperative purchases. Ray actually knows the purchasing agent in Orange County. He placed a call, they talked, she sent him every one of the documents he needed, and he verified that it meets our code. The fiscal impact section is almost as long as the staff report, but there's a reason for that. We were challenged to identify our revenue generation in the fire department, not just in this area, but in fees and everything else. What we found in that revenue generation analysis is that in the last five years, for out-of-county assignments, the department has generated almost two million dollars. A quarter of a million dollars of that in five years was for rental of the unit. Every time we go out on a mutual aid assignment that's reimbursable, we get a per-hour reimbursement for use of the vehicle, plus we get paid for everybody that's on the line and the backfill. And admittedly, that makes up a majority of the two million. But what's proposed in the fiscal impact section is pretty much mirrors what we discussed during the budget, in that this, the funds for this unit are now living in the fleet, in fleet's budget. That's where you put it during the budget process. So they would purchase it, and a special account would be set up utilizing the new tracking that we've built into the department now, that's been approved by Brad, so that when it goes out, those funds for rental are placed in that fee, or in that fund, and used to not just offset the cost of the unit, but assure that in the future, when I'm long gone, that there's enough money to replace this, so the next time the next fire chief comes to you and says we've got a worn-out fire engine, that there'll be money in there, and we won't have had to take it from the general fund. So I believe the recognition of the revenue generation item and the way that we have been approved to account for that, and that it really works out well. Brad is here, I'm sure if you have questions on the rest of the funding, I'm not a funding whiz, but I'm pretty pleased that we were able to come forward, in my opinion, with a revenue-neutral proposal. So the hour is not as late as usual, however, it's a pretty straightforward staff report, which is what you expect from me. That's the unit right there. You've been asking when we can take delivery. The reason we want to tag on, the reason we want to move this along quickly, is we have a commitment to have this unit in service before next fire season. So I ask that you consider staff's recommendation in that you approve the award of the contract to purchase of one Type III brush engine from KME Kovach, which just happens to be the manufacturer of the three structure engines we have. And we recommend the issuance of that purchase order by the purchasing and materials manager. The proposed award has been reviewed and recommended by purchasing materials manager Ray Ambler, and by fleet facility superintendent Anthony Garcia. The process of this award is in compliance with city code.
Councilmember Hombdahl?
Yeah, I'm fantastic. I tried to get this built about six years ago. And not only that, the way you got it set up in the budget, the money, at that time is about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year when we set our trucks and troops out. Now we got to put it back into a part. I think it's, I'm really happy. Now, I got to ask you a question, because I didn't get a chance talking before this. Is this the same idea as the squad truck that we were talking about, where they can go out, go to the home instead of taking a big fire engine to the house?
No. Even though the way we have set this up, we can actually use it for smaller structure fires, it's not our intent, this is a beast.
Yeah.
It's an all-wheel drive, and it's as small as we could get it in today's environment. So we would not normally send this out on routine medical calls.
Okay, that's another one we were talking about.
Unless we have nothing left.
Yeah. Well, I'm pleased to see you have it, I'm glad, because I looked at it here about six years ago. We try, not only that, the way you got that budget set up, I think it's fantastic. I'm glad that money's going to where, into some, instead of going into the general fund. Thank you.
Councilmember Legel?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Chief, you started to answer the question I'm going to be asking. For those of us that only want to become firefighters when we were little kids, what makes a brush truck a brush truck?
Yeah, well, I'll try to give you the short answer. It's the wheelbase, it's the all-wheel drive, it's the ground clearance, it's what we call the angle of approach, the angle of departure, so we can get into some of the dips and valleys and stuff like that. It's the ability, this rig actually has two pumps on it, and one of them is an auxiliary motor, so it's the ability to pump and roll, so while the engine is rolling down the road, the firefighters actually have the hoses stretched out, and they're doing a mobile attack. So it's a whole lot of other things, but those are the key components.
Thanks.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I'm just curious, what were some of the bells and whistles that you left, would I even know, but that you had to leave off of this brush truck?
They had a triple redundant electrical system that is specific to their department that was right in the area of three thousand dollars. They went with a Cadillac set of gauges, where the gauges we use from KME are perfectly fine. Those were some of the big-ticket items. But it also boiled down to having a very positive relationship with this vendor, and they offered us some additional discounting.
Great, I have to say, you know, I am thoroughly impressed. I think that you guys, I mean, this is a fantastic strategy, what a great opportunity. So kudos to you, you're doing a fantastic job in your position. Thank you.
It's a team effort.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Can I join the team and take it on a field and stream road test?
Well, there is a training period that I'm sure we can work something out, unless you haven't driven.
Helmets and everything. No, I wanted to say to you, I think it's really important that people notice, and especially the people in fire, I know they know now, but previously, how the money would come back to the city, and it would go to the general fund, it was never withheld in an account for the re-appropriation of these. And I think it's important that the city knows that this money that this truck generates is going to replace itself.
The other component is, we are now tracking all the reimbursement from salaries we're getting. We're doing some in-house tracking so we can show an offset on our overtime.
And then I think you also, don't you have a small percentage for overhead you get back?
Right now, ten percent of gross, we get an administrative fee on. And we're working on calculating actual administrative fee, because if it's higher than ten percent, that'll be built into the new contract.
Are you contemplating establishing a similar fund so that when you send a structure engine out, you can put that money into a fund on the structure engine replacement program?
Kind of like to get this one under our belt and then go that direction, because this one goes out mu, I would actually prefer that this one go out. I mean, it's like ten to one, this one goes out much, much more.
Much more frequently. And I've noticed, I think in the past, the structure engines tend to go locally, and this one tends to go long ago and far away.
Yes.
Okay. Councilmember Hombdahl?
Does she have any more comments, Mr. Mayor?
I got to go to public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Is there anyone, we'll open public comment, anyone like to talk to us about a big red fire engine? Come on, nobody? Okay, we'll close public comment and come back. Councilmember Hombdahl?
I'm glad to move the recommendation that we receive Type III brush engine, brush truck. I think it's, I was really happy to see it. Thank you.
And I'll second. Okay, is there any further discussion at this time? Seeing no lights, can we vote, please? That passes five-zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, written communications, anything? Nada. Okay. Oral communications, anybody out there want to talk to us about anything for two minutes? Hey, somebody? Life is good.
Jim Mosby, resident of Lompoc, council mayor. I just want to share with you guys a couple of old magazines of Lompoc, ones from the sixties, one from the seventies. And one of the key selling points of Lompoc, and in the sixties, they referenced Lompoc as near-perfect weather, some of the best in Southern California. And then by the seventies, we had perfect weather and the best in the nation. So when you're thinking about catchphrases and slogans of Lompoc, try to remember one of our big selling points. And if you were living in Bakersfield or Fresno right now, or Lake Havasu at one hundred and twenty-four degrees, you know, Lompoc is a huge sales point. I had a friend visiting from Lake Havasu recently, and he says, "I miss Lompoc so much." You know? Anyhow, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication, we'll come back to the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports, starting from the right. We'll go across.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On June twenty-seventh, I was in Roseville for an NCPA meeting. The city did pay for my hotel room and travel expense, or gasoline, travel.
I have a note from TAP TV that the parade is going to be rebroadcast Wednesday at ten, Friday at eight, Saturday and Sunday at three, now through July thirty-first. The video is on demand and available now on the city's website. And I hope this is the parade I just announced that I'm talking about here. Last thing, Thursday, fireworks. I hear illegals already. Please, please, don't blow this, you guys. Let's use the safe and sane, let's do it right, and keep the illegals. Police your neighbors for us, please.
Councilmember Hombdahl?
A couple of things when I would do it, I spent a lot of time this weekend with everybody else in the parade and going on the parade route, but also the centaurium. And then I had so much fun in it, but you got to realize, the police, fire chief, police chief was down there at three forty-five in the morning to start putting this thing together. Our police department was down there working her tail off and did a beautiful job on it. And I need to thank the people I seen there and talked to, they had an excellent job. Actually, I got there at nine o'clock in the morning and left about three in the afternoon, and I did shoot the gun. So, but I, it, I was real pleased to talk to the people about it. And believe it or not, the Santa Maria Railroad donated, what, seven hundred dollars? Seven hundred dollars to this event. Santa Maria Railroad, this is Lompoc, you know, it's hard to get anybody from Santa Maria to do that. I've been around here too long. But anyway, I thought that was really good. He came down there, and I don't know how he got the information, but he goes, "They're coming back, they may have two events next year, but they're, they like, everybody said, the weather, the road, you name it, they had nothing but positives on it." So I'm really pleased I was at that. The one question, I don't know if anybody in this room can answer, is that the night of the blackout, why were the lights on the intersections in town where everything else was out? Now, do we have some type of, are they batteries?
There's a battery backup on them, and because they're LED lights now, they use a lot less juice.
No, it's good, because I made a tour around the whole town, and I couldn't believe that the lights were on. The only ones that were out was down here on one and two forty-six.
Yeah, all the intersections in town are battery backup.
Yeah, well, that's good to know, because I don't think people, because nobody else had any lights, they wonder why, what wire light that went to them, so I thought that was excellent. And then one I want to make, and Dirk made it earlier, there's a lot of people maybe listening, but also in this audience, a new Del Clement, he's had some real bad problems in the last several months, and he passed away last night. So anybody who went to Lompoc High School and the FFA Department, he was our ag teacher many years ago, all my kids, and then there's other people in town, he's the one that's been barbecuing all over town for a long time, and his brothers are from the San Joaquin Valley. I just ought to make that announcement, it's tough to take.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mayor Lynn. I think we all have been attending some of the very similar events. Old Town Market is one I don't want to make sure the community forgets about on Friday afternoons, it's been great. There was a wine tasting event, I believe it was last Friday, or last Friday was off the weekend before. Of course, the parade, Flower Festival, and yes, the Criterion Bike Race, that was a labor of love. I have to say thank you to our police chief, but also to Michael Hecker, who both contacted me, and somehow, we, we and all of you mostly got it to happen, so I'm so excited. I have to admit, the turnout from the public was a little low. I think we knew that that was probably because of Flower Festival, but I'm confident that if we do this again next year, it will be even better. And there's just so much potential, so that was fantastic. Another thing that happened is the new and improved animal shelter had its grand opening. I didn't make it for that, unfortunately, there was a ribbon cutting, but I wanted to make sure to mention to the community that there is new ADA-accessible facilities and some other upgrades that took place at the animal shelter that we helped fund, so I was really happy to hear about that. Lastly, the blackout, I'm glad you brought that up, Councilmember Hombdahl, because my first question inquiry was into the crime that took place during the blackout. And there were some incident reports, as to be expected, and I don't know if the chief wants to briefly go over any of that, just to give the public some general information.
Initially, there were about eight different incidents that evening that were unusual. They were all window smashes. Initially, we thought that there were some entries made into the businesses. Further investigation, there was no, none of the buildings were entered, but rocks were thrown through the windows of about six to eight different locations.
I mean, how disappointing, but I guess, you know, in that situation, something, sometimes that's what happens. Now, there was two incidents, I believe there was a vehicle accident, although there is no, that's not necessarily associated with the blackout. And then there was also a petty theft that took place, a personal petty theft, I think, as well.
Right. But again, those were, it's hard to be able to blame those on anything with the blackout.
the blackout.
So, what I mostly wanted to express is, I did get in touch with the police department right away, and was really pleased to hear that, that was a considerable blackout. I mean, that lasted a while. You know, that was one of those ones where I didn't have the answers. Usually, it's a Lompoc utility, but it wasn't. So, I wanted to commend the police department, because I do think that an adequate job was accomplished that evening. And, I have been in contact with Captain Don Deming about potentially even updating the plan for emergency response. And, he's been open to the idea. So, you know, just to give council a heads up, that's something I've just been looking at. But, overall, I would say we are in pretty good shape after a blackout like that. So, thank you.
So, the most exciting thing I did last week and the week before was travel to Palm Springs on behalf of the city, along with the city administrator, to receive an award from the 40and8 organization. It's an affiliate of the American Legion of California. I guess I would describe them as, they're a fun group, yes. They are every bit of that, and Dirk is familiar with them. And, they pass out awards each year. They have three of them. One is a law enforcement officer of the year, and they recognized a longtime employee of a sheriff's department in Northern California that fails me at the moment. And then, they recognize an individual for saving life. And, the young lady who they recognized gave CPR to a four-year-old at a preschool. When everyone else was trying to figure out what to do, she jumped in and gave CPR, and the young man was saved. And, it was discovered he had a congenital heart defect, and they put a pacemaker in the next week, and he's alive and well. And then, the city of Lompoc was recognized as the city of the year for providing employment and services to veterans. So, every once in a while, somebody says something to us, but in a negative way, but here's proof positive that we have been selected of all the cities in the state of California. So, that was outstanding. And, I think they paid for my trip down there. Yeah, they covered the cost of the mileage and the hotel room. So, thanks to them, and they are a really fun group. I was at the animal shelter dedication that Councilmember Costa spoke about, and welcomed everybody on behalf of the city, because we were a contributor to that project, and also thanked all of the other ones. The mayor of Buellton and the mayor of Solvang were also there, along with a number of county staff members and our county supervisor. The funnest thing was the Queen's Coronation Ball last week. And, I'm happy to report that the goddaughter of Arlene Pelster, a former worker here at the city, was selected queen, and she had an amazing speech. I wish I had it taped to play it again, but it was, both the content and the delivery were amazing, and I think she's a future mayor contender. Yes. She can do testimonials. I spoke at the chamber luncheon, and it was kind of an update on the theme of state of the city, and the impact of the slight increase in our CalPERS cost of 70% coming over the next few years. If you want to hear that, I'll be doing it for the third time on my Tap TV show, and you can turn in and hear almost the same speech, because I did it previously for the Committee to Improve North County, Inc. And then, we had the Denmat mixer, and the biggest takeaway there was chatting with Denmat employees. And, they were asking me questions, you know, "Hey, Lompoc is great." And, you know, "We go to, we go out to eat here, we go shopping here." Some of them have actually already moved here. And, there was one lady I was talking to, she and her husband have now decided to fix up their home in Santa Maria and sell it, and come to Lompoc, because they found it to be such a friendly and inviting place, and they actually felt like they were included in family here. I also attended with the city administrator, and by the way, the city administrator also went to the 40and8 presentation. The prison luncheon last, two weeks ago, and the very exciting thing there was a discussion of this prison's drug rehabilitation program, which is really a completely, complete behavior modification program. They had several people there giving testimonials. And, it was amazing. Lives changed by changing the way they looked at life. So, that was great. And then, also, I serve on the Cabrillo High School Aquarium Board, and they had their presentation. And, their usage is way up. Good things are happening there. And, that's real progress. Their visitor numbers are up, and more importantly, the number of kids coming in and wanting to participate in the program are now at the point that they can't take everyone. So, there are so many kids that want to participate in the aquarium program, not everyone gets in. And then, my last thing would be to ask for an agenda item to, so that Councilmember Starbuck and I could present our shop Lompoc program at next week's council meeting, or two weeks from now's council meeting. So, I'm pretty sure I know who the second is. Kind of looking for the third. Okay. So, we're set. We'll be back in two weeks. I'm sorry, city minister?
Councilmember Costa, I have a question.
I was just curious if there's room on the agenda, if, is that a packed agenda? And, what about the reporting requirements?
Well, actually, on the future agenda list for the 16th, we have an item to review, the council request list that you had formally looked at in January. So, we can agendize that together as one report?
Perfect.
And, we will need to work with you to come up with a recommendation for council.
We recommend what we wrote out. Oh, and, I'm short, two things. Number one, I have a letter here from the 29th Annual West Coast Cub Fly-In, which will be held at the Lompoc Airport, July 12th, 13th, and 14th. If you have not gone to that, it is a lot of fun. The planes almost hover and land. They go so slowly. And, flower bombing is pretty exciting. And, they're also a fun bunch of people. Just stand around and talk to them about their airplanes. And then, lastly, I'd like to acknowledge Larry Bean, our utility director, who has just delivered to all of us all the historical reports on the efficiencies of the water and wastewater plants for council review. So, we have a little home reading. It's in your box. It came in this afternoon. Anything else? Okay, seeing nothing, no one speaking. Why, we'll, we will be adjourned to a regular meeting at 7:00 PM on July 16th. Thank you all for staying.